Welcome to our May 14, 2013 Gilbert Town Council Study Session, live from the islands in Gilbert, Arizona. We are grateful to be here and thank you for hosting us today. The members of the Gilbert Town Council, my left and right, some town leadership, and we'll get a chance to hear from some of you in a few minutes, and we're grateful that you are here. The first thing on our study session agenda item is to prepare for Thursday night's Town Council meeting, and I have some assignments that I will make out, or make, I will make some assignments, and the first one would be our introduction to scouts. I have down Councilmember Daniels. Pillar of the Month, Councilmember Peterson, that's agenda item number two. Agenda item number three, which is the Public Works Week. Why don't we make a switch, knowing what Councilmember Murray just said that he wouldn't be here for the first part. Vice Mayor Cooper, could you accept the assignment to introduce our Highland High Champion volleyball team?
Did they beat the Tigers? My Tigers?
Chief Dorn, could you throw him out? Well, as you know, three Louis's were Hawks and three were Tigers, so we're okay.
All right, I'll try.
All right. The, yes, they did, but the Tigers took second. And Councilmember Cook, if you could take agenda item number three, proclamation for the Public Works Week, and I have been assigned the agenda item number four that I will take care of. Do those assignments work? Thank you. Related to our discussion in preparation for Thursday, Councilmember Murray, we just discussed, and you didn't have any specific items you wanted to have as a priority right now, Councilmember Taylor?
No, Mayor, thanks.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Cook? Which ones?
Ten.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, on the consent calendar, I just wanted a quick comment I think the public might appreciate on number fifteen from Doug Marshall, if he's here. Other than that, number twenty-four and twenty-five, if we want to get into the public hearing items.
I'm also going to ask, Councilmember Cook, you had on eighteen, I'm going to ask a question about sixteen and seventeen, which will be more for the council. And then, yes, we'll see how, let's do the consent items first, and there are some additional items that I think we can save some time by covering in our discussion today for a couple of the public hearing items and then some of the administrative items, and so let's start with agenda item number ten, Councilmember Cook.
Would you like to give just a little brief introduction as to this agenda item?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Lewis, councilmembers. Agenda item number ten is an addendum to the current Southwest ambulance contract we have for emergency response in the town of Gilbert. We've had this contract in place, current contract in place since August of 2011. This is a regional contract between the towns of Gilbert and Queen Creek and Apache Junction and the city of Mesa. Along with me here, I'll introduce Jason Taylor. He is the management advisor for the city of Mesa, who oversees and assists us with the contract negotiations and the contents of that.
Well, thank you. One of the questions I wanted to ask, in this contract, there's a number of performance metrics, and I would love to see maybe what our current report is as relates to Southwest, you know, meeting those metrics and so forth. I know that we're keeping track of that data. Is there a way for you to provide that data before Thursday?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, certainly, we have some information for tonight, however, I don't know if it's as complete as you'd like, but we do have some information that's current based on the last month and the last quarter as far as numbers of responses, compliance rates. I can tell you that since this contract has been in place, the town of Gilbert has not assessed or collected any liquidated damages to this point under this contract. With that, if you'd like, I can produce some basic information and see if that answers your question.
I think without seeing, you know, the data, I don't have any questions other than maybe providing it initially, and that would be fine.
Very well. Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, so Thursday night, is that acceptable?
Again, via email from me would be fine.
And you could go ahead and call for the whole council?
Absolutely. We'll do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Agenda item fifteen, Councilmember Peterson.
Doug, I was, I know you've got crutches. Sorry. I was hoping you could give us a quick rundown on why the 2% increase, what's causing that as we just recap our conversation in brief. Thanks.
And if that, my name is Doug Marshall, Human Resources, from the town of Gilbert. I'm mayor and council. To Councilmember Peterson's question, I can directly answer that. We also have a brief presentation if there are, there's a broader interest, but to your specific question, there's a recommended medical premium increase of 2% for the upcoming fiscal year. That would be the first increase since, I believe it was '08, '09 was the last premium increase that we saw under the plan. The board, let me back up a step, we have a board of trustees that serves the town and this, these plans as fiduciaries, and it's established by Arizona statute 11981 says that we have to have a board of trustees because of the type of entity that we are that oversees self-funded medical plans such as the town of Gilbert's medical plan. The board is a five-person panel. The board is chaired by one of our original members, Tony Panapinto, who's been on since 2003 inception of the self-funded plan. The vice chair is former councilmember Pressmick, who's been also on since 2003. We have Councilmember Daniels, who is the council's appointment to the board. Mark Spicic acts as the staff member, and probably should have listed Citizen Bob Elmer as appointed by council as well earlier. So we have a five-person board that receives a lot of information and makes recommendations to council regarding premiums. That's one of the things that that board does with consultation from staff. I serve the board as a staff member, as well as the underwriters from our third-party administrator for the health plan. So that kind of gives you some framework to answer the question. Looking forward, and it's not an issue this year, but looking forward to the following fiscal year, there are two key provisions of the Affordable Care Act that we will be required to either implement or enhance. Many of the provisions don't impact our plan because we either already comply or we're exempted from it because we have some protections as a grandfathered plan because we've not made substantial changes since the inception of the reform. So looking forward to fiscal year 15, there were two key provisions that we identified to impact the plan by around 2%, give or take a little bit, but real close to 2% of premium. Biggest of those is a fee that is designed to stabilize the private, or the individual insurance markets, starting with a per-covered life fee that for our plan translates to over And that's based on preliminary fee announcements that have come out. There's information that I've seen from industry sources that indicate that in subsequent years it will be lower than that, but it's not known what it will be or whether that's true, but it's anticipated that it will be lower than that following years. So that's the bigger of the two. The second item is an enhancement on something that we've been able to buffer ourselves against a little bit since 2011, I believe it was, when we originally had to implement the first step of this change. That has to do with dependent status. Under the Affordable Care Act, dependents under group health plans have to be, or the plans must allow dependent children to be covered, and I use the term dependent, it's really not dependent children, children of the employee to be covered through the age of 26, which was not a big jump for our plan because we were already at 25, so that wasn't as substantial. The bigger one is that it also requires coverage of married children of an employee. And so when we originally implemented that change, we asserted our grandfathered status as a plan, and it took a baby step there, and it buffered us for a couple of years in that we were able to put a condition on who, for that expanded group, that expanded eligibility, who we covered, to say that they would only be eligible to stay on our plan, or to be on our plan, if they did not have access to another group health plan through an employer. So, for example, if a married child, regardless of age, if a married child had access to a plan through either their own employer or their spouse's employer, right now, they would not qualify for coverage under our plan. When we fully implement this next fiscal year, we will anticipate that we will pick up some dependents as a result of that enhancement. So we've already seen a little bit of an impact. It was what we impact, what we estimated, our, the underwriter from MMSI, our third-party administrator, estimated that when we made that change, it was going to impact us by a quarter to a half a percent. We're estimating, again, not more than half a percent, but the, that other fee is going to be a substantial impact. So rallying back to your original question, the premium recommendation is actually for this fiscal year, the board was weighing a lot of conflicting data and looking forward to not just this year, but also the subsequent year. And as it's indicated in the council communication, one of the factors that was considered is the strength of the reserve, that the plan has in assets to be able to cover claims costs, also historical claims, and in looking at current year activity, it's been extremely positive. So that pointed us, or the board, towards a lower number, but ultimately, the recommendation that came from the board was a 2% premium increase, and I think that positions us in the following fiscal year to only really react to actual changes in our claims costs rather than on top of that having to add on another, another 2% for the implementation of some of these mandates.
Thank you. Any, Councilmember Cook?
Quick question. I know in the communication it talked about that the town projected this, is it this fiscal year to put $10 million toward the total revenue? Is that how I understand that?
The, you're still speaking strictly about the medical plan?
Yes, it says the town contributions toward the medical premium is projected around 10 million. We're going to put 10 million in, is that what I understand?
I just want to confirm if that's for next year, or if that was a statement?
Well, it says based on fiscal year 2012, 2013. Because my next question would be, what do you think next year's fiscal year contribution might be?
And that question, we can, again, address, or I may backtrack, and it might help if I go through a couple of fundamental historical things, but I can certainly address that direct question. Your question that you asked is about the $10 million in estimate, that's in the financial impact section. In current, I'm sorry, in, yes, it would be projected to be $10 million, which is an increase of approximately $200,000.
From last year?
From, yeah, from the current year's plan, based on current participation.
Okay. And the only reason why I ask is because when I saw that, the change in the fund balance from last year to this year was about 1.3 million, you know, and talking to Councilmember Daniels, you know, I guess the philosophy is to be at around 4 million. I guess the question would be, in your forecasting for next year, do you anticipate anything near that type of a change? Because I'm just wondering, you know, the 2% as it relates to the premium of the, our team members that contribute to that, you know, obviously the town provides the bulk of that.
Mayor and Councilmember Cook and the rest of the council, I think it might be beneficial for me to go through a brief presentation and I'll, there's, I think, eight slides, and I can do it fairly briefly, that will address your question, or I'll turn to the council if you would prefer me to just address the specific question.
Mayor Lewis, can I chime in here? Our costs, our health costs are largely associated because we're self-insured with the health of the population, of the individuals that are participating in the plan, and for the most part, we've had this very relatively healthy town population as far as our employees are concerned. So it's very hard to predict, if you will. We can look at trends and we can try to follow trends, but there may come a year where we have, you know, a plethora of sickness and illness amongst our members, and that could send us over the top. We have to make the best-case scenario, best-guess scenario predictions as we can. I think this might be a great presentation for Thursday night. I think that it might be of interest to the public as a whole, and so I would, my preference would be to save this for Thursday night, but if you have specific questions, either I can help or Doug can help. But just in a nutshell, we want to keep the reserves about 4 million, and don't forget that the Health Trust has basically given back to the general fund $2.5 million over the last three years, and that's been extremely beneficial to us particularly during the downturn. So just emphasize the fact that because we're self-insured, we're not just throwing 10 mil, you know, we're not just giving $10 million. There's actually a safety net both for our employees, for the town, and also when needed for the town's budget as well, and so just have to kind of look at it and its whole package.
So in summary, now I'm going back on agenda item 10. If Vance addresses the concern through an email grade, otherwise you'll pull it. And on 15, Doug will plan on having 15 polled, and you can do a short presentation, we can have some additional dialogue. Councilmember Peterson?
I've actually been very impressed with the way that our town has run the health fund. It's been amazing with, in a time of rising healthcare costs, that's remarkable. And I just wanted to point out that the change in premium recommendation, that 2% is directly attributable to the mandates of the Affordable Care Act. I just thought that was fascinating, so, thanks.
Thank you. Before we get to 18, question on 16 and 17. 16 is a grant for swim lessons from Southwest Ambulance. As a council, is that one that we anticipate that we would poll for discussion on Thursday, or is that one that we are comfortable with? Is he comfortable, comfortable? Councilmember Peterson, is 16 one that you were comfortable with? Okay. How about 17? That was also a question from staff. That is the intergovernmental agreement related to the 470 pedestrian countdown signals. Is that one that would also be polled on Thursday?
Mayor, I'm sorry, when you say am I fine with it, I wasn't planning on discussing those two. My vote, I don't know that I'll be voting for that one. The pool pack one, I don't see any problem with number 16. What was your other question?
It was 16 and 17, and that was more town staff wondered if they should be prepared on Thursday night. It sounds like you're ready to vote.
Voluntary donations are wonderful. We're grateful for those from our ambulance company.
Thank you. 18, Councilmember Cook?
I just have one question. I'm assuming there's current fiber that's in the ground today, and it's not doing well, so I'm just trying to understand what problem we're trying to solve with the new fiber, I guess. That's my interpretation.
Sure. Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Cook, this project is actually for new fiber. There is a long baseline road from Greenfield Road to west, a mile and a half, to Driftwood. We do have, as part of this project, a replacement of fiber on Greenfield Road between Guadalupe and baseline, and that is some of the oldest fiber in town. It's currently, I can't remember if it's six or 12 strands, we're now currently installing 98 strands, so the main cost of fiber is to install the conduit. Installing the actual fiber is cheaper.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving from the consent calendar, in the public hearing, section 21, 22, 23 will all be continued to June. 24 does involve a lot, and so do the council, as we talk about the capital improvement plan. Is that something that would help us today to have some information, or should we wait for Thursday night? Councilmember Peterson?
I don't think I need to discuss in full. I just had a quick question for Edgar, and I can pull it aside later, but I was just looking for, this may interest you, but I was looking for a list of the items that would be under the threshold of the $100,000 contract mark that wouldn't necessarily come back to us for separate approvals. So that list helps me focus in on what, I mean, we have so much to review in this short time, I thought that might be helpful, at least for me and maybe others who are interested. So I don't know if he has that list prepared, but it's something I asked him for, and I haven't seen it yet.
Edgar, you're close to the mic in helping us get ready for Thursday night to Councilmember Peterson's comment, and if there is additional high-level summary comments you can help us with, because there's a lot of information on 24.
Mayor Lewis, councilmembers, Edgar Medina, Assistant Town Junior for Capital Projects. Yes, I did have a conversation with Councilmember Peterson, and I am working on the list. It is kind of a long list to put together because you're, what I'm having to do is kind of go look at every contract that is going to be under the $100,000 threshold, and fortunately or unfortunately, there are projects, or as we start moving in forward in the five-year program and funding availability starts becoming less and project codes become lower, there tends to be a lot more projects in that fit that range. So it's taken me a little bit longer than I expected when we first talked yesterday. So I am working on that list for you. To answer your second question, Mayor Lewis, there is a couple items that kind of want to highlight in this year's CIP project or update process that is kind of a carryover from the years prior in terms of prioritization, and also some new implementation procedures that we actually did internally to streamline our process. So if you allow me to do a quick presentation, I would like to take that time.
Please.
Hopefully my PDF works here. Oh my God.
As long as you agree to.
Yeah. I agree, I now agree the town will pay for something, I'm sure. I guess just a little bit of a recap or a summary, the CIP update is an annual process. It's, in total, it's about a nine-month process in which that, it starts with involvement from each of the departments and the staff members from, from staff and supervisors and directors. So it basically is our planning document for our five-year plan as well as our long-term infrastructure plan for build-out conditions. So it includes nine categories from streets, traffic control, municipal facilities, redevelopment, public safety, stormwater, water, wastewater, and parks and rec. Kind of what I wanted to highlight in the bottom is the process improvements. We implemented what's called a budget CIP entry form, and it was quite involved. We had the benefit, or I had the benefit of having a great team with the budget group as well as our IT group, and putting together what's called our SharePoint CIP entry form. And what it actually allows, and I can kind of go through here, I could make this presentation available, this, I had more of a, more of a summary here to kind of go over the overall program. But what I wanted to kind of highlight is, what we've done is, we actually created a workflow for our CIP process. And what that does is, it's kind of staying true to our initiatives, and more specifically to us, is it's that level of transparency that we have, not only to ourselves, but to mayor and council and the managers as a whole. So what we've done is, we actually created this workflow where it starts from the staff members to the supervisors, to the directors, and then to the managers, to have full involvement in the CIP process now. So what does that mean? It means that when a staff member, when we start the CIP process in August or September, and a staff member actually puts in a new project, you could actually, the supervisor and the directors actually have the ability to be looking at that CIP project. They're required to put in the cost estimates, the scope, and preliminarily what their funding source might be. And kind of this is, or screenshots of where we would be finding this. So if you actually go into our Intranet webpage, you see that we have this CIP input form, and what that does is, once you select in there, you actually go into basically a pulldown menu for each of the departments. And what's nice about it is, in working with IT department, they were able to, to, let's say a public works, streets section comes up, then what that does is, it actually allows you to identify different funding sources associated for street projects. So, for example, they can't mistakenly say, I want to use funding from another department. It's kind of limited to what normally is associated with the streets, and same with water, wastewater, and parks and so forth. So once you start putting in this input form, or open up this input form, and this is kind of a good snapshot here because it's very similar to what you see in the book. It actually shows the current fiscal year, what you've expended the prior years, and then the following five years, plus six to 10, and beyond 10. And then, kind of where I was telling you, down at the funding sources, you start looking at what available funding sources are available for that specific type of project. And what that does is, it could reduce the amount of back and forth of correcting a project as you develop it, because there is very layers, many layers of back and forth between the CIP staff and the departments to get this right. And you, like I said, it's very similar, you provide professional services, construction services, supplies, utilities, and it's basically that first check. And once this is inputted, it actually goes to your supervisor, and then he has to, he or she has to review it, approve it, and then the workflow goes to their director. Then they have to review it or approve it, or approve it or not approve it, and then it just tracks. And we have this master list for every project that was inputted, whether it was approved or not approved as part of the process. So this allowed us to, and it's, there is a bit of a growing pains, of course, because it's a new software, and, but a very powerful tool, and it's a very transparent process from our standpoint. The other component that I know that we've been waiting for two updates is the prioritization criteria. We incorporated for this year's update 10 criteria components. So as staff members and their supervisors and their directors are inputting these projects, they are required to start ranking their projects. And it's on a scale from 1 to 10, 1 to 5, with 5 being the highest, for each of the categories. And then, as they get ranked, or total points are tallied up, then they start prioritizing within their own section. Here's just a snapshot of kind of what it would end up looking, and this is for the fire department section. So you look on the left, in that middle column, two columns, where it says prioritization and ranking, the points that are, where it starts 22, 28, 15, 22, 15, that represents the ranking that the staff, supervisor, and directors actually inputted for the ranking that the staff, supervisor, and directors actually inputted for each of those projects. And then consequently, it gets converted into a ranking based off that point system. And that's the end of my slides, but there has been, those two key components have been implemented into this year process that has allowed us to not only be transparent, but also track and have more accountability from each of the departments, and even from the CIP, to make sure that we're not making any mistakes in delivering the projects that each department is looking to build it for the town as a whole.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? The first, the PDF that you brought up, I think it would be great to send to the council. That's an excellent summary. And Councilmember Taylor?
Edgar, thanks for sharing some of those slides on the presentation. Who is eligible to submit a proposed project?
Anyone, any staff, Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Taylor, any staff member is eligible. It gets vetted through their supervisors and the directors, but any staff member can go in there and input a project.
And if a member of the public would like to see the latest version of the CIP, what's the, where would they go to find the latest version and then maybe provide input?
We can make that available. That draft document has already been sent to you via email, and we could certainly post that on our webpage, make it as attachment to either the item, or I'll take direction from the clerk on where Kathy, where that might go. But we can make that available.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Edgar, thank you. I am going to skip 25, which is the budget, and we'll see how we do time-wise, as we are targeting 6 o'clock to start the neighborhood portion. 28 and 28A, I might turn to Kelly to just help the council. There was additional information that came as far as options, and any council you should give to us today that will help us in preparation for Thursday? And maybe a quick summary for those attending of 28A, 28 and 28A, what is in front of the council for discussion?
And if I may, Mayor, members of the council, item 28, you have two ordinances before you. These were brought to you at your direction relating to the meet and confer process in Gilbert. The first ordinance, let me back up, we were directed to allow meet and confer to proceed through June 30th, 2014, and then to terminate at that point. So the two ordinances before you both do that. One deletes the provisions of meet and confer, except those relevance to having one more memorandum of understanding with the two employee organizations, GPLA and IAFF, things that provide protection for management rights, and how to address conflicts, and things like that. Your first option ordinance keeps those in place. The second option ordinance does away with all of that and merely provides that one MOU can be put in place for fiscal year 2013 and 2014. Will terminate June 30th, 2014, and the actual meet and confer provisions in our town code would all be deleted, except for that one allowance. If that is the direction of the council to adopt that ordinance, then we need to incorporate probably some of those things into the MOU, again, to deal with conflicts or alleged breaches and management rights. So those are the two big issues before you. The 28A is the actual MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding, with GPLA and IAFF, which are your two recognized employee organizations in the town of Gilbert. They've, you've been provided a summary of changes. The issue that we provided additional information to the council today, and for which we as staff are seeking direction, is how the council wants to handle compensation for time spent representing employees who are involved in a discipline process, for critical incident response time. And we wanted to provide you an understanding of the legal requirements for time spent by all employees, not just members of the employee organization or representatives, but all employees, spent in meetings where those meetings are called and controlled by management or dealing with work-related issues. Under the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, that time would require, would be required to be compensated for those employees. And happy to address any questions, and I'm looking to Deputy Manager specific, if there's anything more we need to add.
The first part about what you said, option one would summarize what the council had decided a month or two ago.
Correct.
And then option two is if we decided to change it. So option one, if that were approved, the MOU would be, continue until June 30th of 2014?
Correct. And it would delete any provisions allowing for negotiations for an additional MOU. Everything related to meet and confer comes to an end June 30th, 2014, if that ordinance is approved.
And if option one is selected, there, it is, the discussions that already took place, there aren't additional discussions that would occur in the next 12 months?
Only as it relates to transition, some of the provisions may be incorporated into personnel rules, but there would be no negotiations with employee organizations.
So stopping at that point to the council, any additional questions or comments about option one and option two that will help us for Thursday? Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, this was, we had a very long discussion about this originally, and I know some feel that it was very clear that we were settled on option one. I left that meeting very confused. So option two, to me, if nothing else, removes bargaining rights from the unions, and I think that that's consistent with my goals. So I would like to expedite that as quickly as possible. I'll give one example of where this applies. So the 24A, or actually, yeah, 24A, I'm sorry, 28A, on the third page, or is it fourth? It's under financial impact. Of that item, there's a comment in here, says language codifying current benefits is included in each of the MOUs. These benefits were not negotiated. In the event Gilbert anticipates a substantive change in any of the non-negotiated benefits offered to employees, such changes shall be discussed with representatives from each of the employee organizations. It's just such bargaining situations that I want to eliminate, that would not be possible under option two. So I think there's a difference between the two. I think, to me, it matters. To those who feel that there is no difference, then I would just suggest, there's no harm in giving me my way on it. It shouldn't change anything for you.
Carrie, you look like you can help clarify that, too.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Cook. In a response to your question, if there were further questions or negotiations around benefits, that would be handled through the Employee Advisory Committee, and that's provision under the MOU. And that would be a compensable event.
So that would be, when you say compensable?
Time spent in those meetings would be paid time.
So the union representatives would be paid for that time negotiating on those issues? Is that correct?
If I could clarify from a legal perspective, that would not be negotiations, actually. It would be discussing updates at the direction from management and council, because once either option A or option B, or option one or two of the ordinances is adopted, your management no longer has authority to negotiate with the employee organization. So those would be more information in meetings and how things are going to be implemented. I think I can go out on a limb and say it's probably likely that those discussions would be occurring with unrepresented employees as well. Does that make sense?
And would be town leadership, town management directing or requesting that feedback, and therefore that's why it would be compensated?
Correct. That's, but again, both, either ordinance, if adopted by the council on Thursday night, your management and your HR team is no longer authorized to negotiate with employee organizations.
Please, Councilmember.
I guess I would just say that anything in the meet and confer ordinance that gives the employee organization's rights of any kind, that's what I would want to strike. And I know there's a difference between option one and two in that regard, that the summary that I've seen previously to this was that there still are a section of rights related to the employee organizations. Again, whatever those are, I'm trying to, I don't know what the purpose of any of this transition is, if it's not to phase out of that kind of a relationship, working through the unions for our employees. So whatever those rights are, I think that they should be stricken, and I think option two accomplishes that.
Councilmember Taylor?
Can I just clarify? In both options, the sunset date is the same?
Yes, absolutely.
So it's really just the wording in the ordinance, keep it or not? I think that's the fundamental, the sunset date is the same?
Correct.
That is correct. The option one does, it does keep in some language to govern that last final MOU, but both ordinances prohibit any further negotiations of an MOU beyond the one that you're considering Thursday night.
Anything else to this point? We had, you had a second part, which I will ask about in just a minute, but, okay. The second part, you mentioned Kelly, is that moving forward, if an employee has a grievance or a discussion with HR, there was discussion that they could bring some, a fellow employee with them, and then there was a question of some of the feedback that was provided, whether or not that would be compensated for that other employee?
Correct. And if I may, Mayor, under both the personnel rules for, and the MOUs, if an employee is going into a discipline or grievance-type process, they have the right to ask for a representative to attend those interviews, discussions with them, which, from a legal standpoint, we strongly recommend. It just helps with the due process-type rights. But the question is whether those representatives, that time should be compensated. And under the MOUs that are before you, that time would be compensated. Under the personnel rules, an employee has the right to representation. The practice has been to pay for that time if another employee is providing that representation. That's the policy decision for the council, and that's, we recommend, that's outlined in our memorandum, and we recommend that findings be made if that's the direction of the council.
If the council felt that that should continue, some of the feedback you gave is that we need to be specific as to why.
Correct.
And that's, and I guess you would just say, council, read that again, and come back with the reason why.
Correct.
If we said no, probably the same thing, a reason why?
In light of the litigation from other municipalities Phoenix has been involved in, you don't necessarily need to have reasons why if you choose not to compensate that time. But if you do, in order to address some of the rulings that we've seen, even though they're not, they're preliminary rulings and they don't apply to Gilbert, it just kind of gives us an idea of where things may go in a court, we've suggested some findings.
So if we decided to continue, that's where we need to have a reason. If we decided not to, we would just vote that. And I think to the council, that may be what we needed to hear tonight. Is there any discussion that any of you have? Councilmember Cook?
So is that in option one or in option two?
Neither. That would be, and if the council chooses not to compensate that time, we'd have to have an amendment to the MOUs. But the options are attached to the memo we distributed earlier today.
So do we need to, if we did not make a change with what was just said, we still should state a reason? And yet, it's assumed in documentation, that's how, if we keep it the same, that we would vote in the affirmative and it would be the same, but we would still want, you would want us to state a reason why?
That would be our preference, from a legal perspective, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Cook?
So another question. If the individual makes a request for a team member to be with them through this process, are they required by management? Does management approve of that? Because like, where I work at, if this were to happen and a manager were to say, sure, you know, bring your team member to that meeting, then obviously, in my opinion, the company will pay for that. How's that process, is that how it works?
That is essentially how it currently works, yes. And that is how it's set forth in the MOUs.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Let's move to item 30. That would be the bed tax. We have information that was given to us today, and maybe we just need to have time to read this, although we have had three or four discussions on the bed tax. And what I'm anticipating Thursday night from listening to council feedback is that a proposal would be to keep our 3% bed tax. One proposal might be to go to 2.8%, and one might be to go to 2.5%. And so to the council, with this information, would we like Scott to give us a summary, or just have time to read it? And any more discussion we need to have in preparation for Thursday? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I think we've all talked about this till we're blue in the face. Maybe that just applies to me. So I think it's fine if we just take it to Thursday, and I'll have a brief statement and be ready to make a motion, so.
Thank you. The last item that we could spend some time on is the budget. As I'm targeting to wrap this section up before, or by 6:00, I think the feeling on agenda item 25 is probably to have that on Thursday night for the public discussion and such. So is there anything on the budget that we've had meetings as a group? We've had individual meetings since our last town council meeting with Dawn and the Budget Department, and there's more information that came today. Anything else that we would like to talk about today in preparation for Thursday? As I ask that question, and Dawn, you don't even need to come to the mic, there is one request. And with the sheets that you gave on staffing, there was a summary at the end that had staffing from 2011, fiscal year 2012, 13, and then the proposal 14. My, and some numbers that I had looked at in a file, had, in 2001, we had 768 FTEs, and the number of FTEs increased until 2009, when we had 1,226. And then we went down in 2010, 11, and then started to go back up a little bit. But I just wondered if, for Thursday night, if you could confirm, because these were handwritten notes I took a year ago, that 2001, what the FTE count was, and then in 2009? Because that's another factor that I'm looking at, if in 2009, that's correct, that it was 1,226, and our proposal is to be at 1,237, and we have jumped in population about 25,000, that isn't impacting me. So if you could confirm that? Thank you. Anything else on 25 for tonight? To our study session, agenda item number one, there is the part, current events are about to take place in between now and Thursday night. We would have Wednesday night, a VIP tour of the Banner Healthcare Facility that we are invited, the Banner Health Center we're invited to, and that would be Wednesday night. And then, of course, Saturday, and we can bring this up on Thursday night, the public is invited to the Banner Health Center, which is just adjacent to Town Hall on Warner Road, and that's from 9:00 to noon on Saturday at 9:30, there's ribbon cutting. Thursday night at 5:30, Councilmember Daniels, there's an event that will have occurred by the time we meet at 7:00 o'clock. Tell us about that event.
Thanks, Mayor. We have Operation Welcome Home this Thursday night. We're welcoming home two of our sailors who have just returned from tours of duty, and we're excited to honor them and their families. Also, Mayor, if I could, just for a moment... Also, Mayor, if I could, just for a moment, next Wednesday night, we have another Operation Welcome Home, an additional soldier, and this one's a little bit different. This Sergeant First Class Corey Remsberg served 10 tours of duty in Iraq and Afghanistan, and on his 10th tour, he was injured, and he has spent over three years now in rehabilitation outside of the state, and he is returning home to Gilbert. And so we will do a very special honor, honor ceremony for him on Wednesday evening, and that begins at 6:00 PM. It's a little bit different than our normal Operation Welcome Home, but this particular soldier, I think, deserves a little extra from us as a community, and so we invite everyone to come out to Town Hall a little before 6:00 PM next Wednesday night.
Thank you. So for agenda item number one of the study session, anything else before I go to number two? Item number two, we have been using to talk about our effectiveness of the study sessions, and in our last meeting, we talked about following a new format or returning to the old format and not having the study session. As I've talked to town leadership, this is what I would propose, that we continue in June to keep on our calendars the two study sessions. And that next week, as I work with our town manager, will propose a recommendation as to whether or not we have our June 3rd meeting, and we may not, but at least for right now, this is a statement to keep it on our calendars. And then the second study session, we would also keep on our calendars for June, which we may or may not have, but as we finish off this fiscal year, it'll give us that flexibility. For June and August, we would go forward and cancel our study sessions. And, July and August, thank you. July and August, we would go ahead and take the study sessions off the calendar, and at the retreat, we would designate some time to talk about study sessions. We do have on the calendar in September, another offsite study session like this. And so at the retreat, that'll give us a chance to have some discussion about how these offsite study sessions went. And so tonight, we'll want to get some feedback from the group here, too. This is tonight a special occasion where we have had three other study sessions in different locations in different parts of Gilbert, and now we're in West Gilbert, and we love West Gilbert. And so we will have gone through the four major sections of Gilbert, and so we would discuss that at the August retreat and determine, again, maybe we continue and do it again, and just plan to have four study sessions, or maybe this is what we wanted, and we don't do it for you. So in summary, the June study sessions, please keep on your calendars. July and August, you may now take off, because we do have a retreat planned, and at the retreat, we'll talk about future study sessions. One topic that came up, and I was discussing this with town leadership, is maybe we keep on the calendar at least one study session a month that gives us the option to still cancel it, but we would at least have one meeting on the calendar that we would have in place, but we would not have a second one. So those are all options we can discuss, but at least for June, July, and August, we have a plan in place. Does that work? Okay. It's 6:00, and this was our time to now have some of our, well, you're the host, we're the guests here, and we're appreciative of having you here. Helga, let me start by asking you the question, were you wanting to give an overview first?
Yes, I am.
Before?
A little bit of time so that those people that would like to sit down could pardon the chairs.
Yes, let's do that. In the transition into agenda item number three of our study session tonight, and we'll have Helga go first, I would like to introduce the town council. And I'll start with myself, Mayor John Lewis. It is a pleasure to serve on the town council, and as I've mentioned already, to be here at the Islands Community Center, we are grateful for this privilege. And to my right is Vice Mayor, please.
Hi, I'm Ben Cooper, and I'm grateful to be here with you and to learn some more about your neighborhoods, and to hear some of your issues, concerns, comments, suggestions. Thank you for having us.
I'm Jared Taylor. My family and I live in the Settlers Point community, just a little bit east of you, and love the Islands community and what you add to Gilbert. Anxious to hear a little bit about your community and some of the things that are important to you, so thank you for being here tonight.
Well, I'm Eddie Cook, and actually, this is-
This is home!
This is home. This is the, the northwest part of Gilbert is the most favorite part of Gilbert to me. So I'm very glad to be here.
Are you biased, is that what you're saying?
And I am very grateful that we save the best for last, so thank you.
I'm Jen Daniels, glad to be here tonight. See lots of familiar faces and people that have contributed a great deal to Gilbert. We appreciate you being here and looking forward to hearing from you.
Victor Peterson, thanks for having us tonight. I spent a lot of my youthful years riding rollerblades up and down Islands Drive. I grew up in part in, on Pebble Court, actually, and on Mariner Court, and love the Islands, and glad to be back. Feels a little like home to me, so thanks.
Thank you. Let's continue. Town Manager Patrick Baner, his parents were visiting from Iowa the last few days, and they loved it, and they had a great time, and we were at several activities with them. And I would never want to embarrass our town manager, but his mom called him a sweetie. And, and so, Town Manager Sweet, I mean, Patrick, if you could introduce yourself and continue on.
I'm not sure what to say from that introduction. I'm Patrick Baner, I'm the town manager here in Gilbert, and it's an honor to serve this community. Thank you for welcoming us in.
Good evening, I'm Mark Sciosic, I'm Deputy Manager. Been a proud resident of Gilbert for almost 11 years, and glad to be here as well.
And I'm Kelly Schwab, I'm one of the Gilbert Town Attorneys, and hi, Carl.
Helga, before we have you introduce yourself, would other members of the Gilbert team, please stand. This is a great group, and because they're not near a microphone, I won't have them each introduce themselves, but we appreciate you being here, and on behalf of the town council, we thank you for your service and joining us for the presentations from West Gilbert, Northwest Gilbert, from some of our favorite citizens. Helga will now turn to you for an introduction.
I'm Helga Stafford, Town of Gilbert Neighborhood Services. I've been here since 1999, a lot longer than a lot of people, and I want to welcome all the residents that are here visiting today. I want to make sure that all of you are in the right quadrant. We've had some people come from other quadrants to the other quadrant meetings, but this quadrant happens to be south of baseline, north of the 202, and west of Val Vista Drive. Now, we're going to hear from three neighborhoods. We're going to hear from the Islands, Spectrum at Val Vista, and El Dorado Lakes. But if you would like to speak, we do have request to speak forums at that table by the doors. Please feel free to fill those out, and you too would be able to speak. Now, this is the favorite quadrant to many people. It's home to the largest neighborhood here, it happens to be this one, the Islands. And the oldest one is also here, and this is in the whole city, Ayers subdivision, which was built in 1917. There was one neighborhood that was built in 1914, but that really doesn't exist anymore except for vacant land. The smallest in, in terms of housing is Ayers. Now, they do have a lot of property that is owned by corporations and businesses, but there are only four homes there. Also, Morgan Estates, home of Councilman Peterson, and a very lovely neighborhood in spite of its small size. Now, El Dorado Lakes has something that other neighborhoods do not have in all of Gilbert. It happens to have a monument, because it is the center of Arizona's population. And Carl, where, where is that monument located?
More than a million.
Okay.
Two thousand, chances.
Well, we'll see what happens on the next census. PKIDs, Park Improvement Districts, are the type of neighborhoods that the Town of Gilbert takes care of common property there. Otherwise, it is basically like a traditional neighborhood. There is no HOA, and in this section of town, there are 10 PKIDs, whereas there's only one outside. Talk about amenities. Joe's Real Barbecue, Hale Center Theater, McQueen Park Activity Center, the Beautiful Water Tower Plaza, and the Gilbert Historical Museum. And most of Gilbert's historical buildings are in this area, from the first school to many of the early churches.
Helga, go back a slide, please.
Yeah.
This is in case, the next time I'm involved in the Gilbert Trivial Pursuit game, so the Ayers subdivision is located where?
Near downtown.
And keep going, so if you're in downtown, is it?
It's pretty close to the Senior Center.
Okay. That does it, thank you.
Was that a test?
No, that was a test for me. I need to be prepared.
Okay.
You may continue.
Oops. All right, now, Neighborhood Services has been around since 1997, under Mayor Dunham, and there has been a growing number of resources to help neighborhoods ever since then. We have the Leadership Center and solvent mediation. We have other, we're partners with those two organizations, and there are multiple others, some state and some county. Up there, we only have nine, nine organizations, but there are a lot more, I just did not have room to put them all. I'm going to encourage neighborhood leaders to pick up this handout, or soon we'll have it on the website, but this will help you with many issues that you might come across. You can, one of the major resources that we have is our website, and it will direct you to everything from police programs to fire programs to you name it, and the most important, Neighborhood Services. Okay, now I would like to call the President of the Islands to come speak.
Thank you, Helga. Good evening. My name is Jim Willerton, President of the Islands Community Association, and on behalf of the residents, the Board of Directors, Chuck Hummel is on our board, Jenny Gappen is our property manager. We would certainly like to welcome Mayor Lewis and the council to the Islands. And that's great that there's a lot of people that are already familiar with the Islands, and perhaps in the sense of expediting time, just do away with those other three quadrants and just keep, keep coming back here, the room's always available for you. Your interest in Northwest Gilbert is exciting, and we really look, look forward to more forums like this in the future. The Islands consists of over 2,600 homes and 26 commercial parcels, restaurants, grocery stores and such. Our residents enjoy boating and fishing on our three stocked lakes. We have the North Lake, the Center Lake, and then the largest one right out here, Lake Three. And many social activities in our community park right outside the door here. With acres, acres of grass and literally thousands of mature trees, the Islands really rates at, at the top of being one of the most beautiful properties in Gilbert, we believe. Working closely with our management company, Rossmar Graham, the Islands continues to grow and thrive even after 25 years, we had our 25th anniversary a year or so ago. Over the years, we've worked to build community with the Islands by, within the Islands by hosting a variety of events. These events include our annual Easter egg hunt, a fall festival, vendor fairs, and the well-known annual boat parade on, on, on all three of the lakes where the lakes are, or the boats are decorated for the holidays. Hosting these events provides an opportunity for neighbors, really, to get to know each other, and it seems each year, the events just get, get bigger and bigger and, and better and better. So it, it, it brings the community together. With, with 2,600 residents, residents here, we have a wide, wide range of ages, from, from little bitty ones to, 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 to the other end of the scale. So we look at these events as a way to, to bring everyone together and meet and, and really help build, build community. We, we've had the pleasure of working with Lieutenant Baker of the Gilbert Police Department, Recreation Coordinators Brent Taisom, and Denise Merton, and many others from the, from the town of Gilbert. All of them are really a great resource and promptly assisted us with our needs. Thanks to each one of them and all the others that, that really make things happen in Gilbert. We, we appreciate it. We, we at the Islands will continue to grow as a premier lake community, built on a foundation of strong social and business relationships. And again, the council's interest in Northwest Gilbert is refreshing, and we look forward to helping with planning and submitting ideas. Thank you very much.
Jim, I'll give an observation, I haven't shared this part, well, the first part I have, the second part I haven't. As I'm talking to individuals around the valley, of whether or not they have ever been to Gilbert, and this is what I've shared before, that they give me that funny look like, well, of course, we've been to Joe's Barbecue, what are you thinking? But they also, those that have been here for quite some time, reflect on when the Street of Dreams was here at the Islands. And it's just interesting to me that that was many years ago, but is still a reason that brought them to Gilbert, and it's a very positive impression because of the Islands, and so I thank you for that. And I guess the, and by the way, we have another Street of Dreams coming to Gilbert in, in October, that will be near Jermaine, Higley area, and, and that will be another chance to showcase Gilbert. But I guess the only other question I've got is, is Les Presmet, Presmet doing okay? Is, are you keeping him under, under control? Is there anything we need to know?
He's, he's our, he's our go-to man. He's our, he's our inside track for, for the town of Gilbert, yeah, yeah, he's doing fine.
I know, he's, he's been a great mentor for me, so I, thank you. To the council, any other items related to the Islands presentation that Jim just gave? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, thank you for choosing this venue, and we'd be happy to host you for future, future meetings also. Thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathy Pye, I'm the Lifestyle Director at the Spectrum at Val Vista. I want to thank you for this opportunity to present my community. I want to thank the Islands for hosting. I also used to live here, and somebody asked me once, why did you leave the Islands? And I said, insanity. But it's a beautiful community, and it's nice to be back. Very briefly, I'm going to let you know about our Spectrum neighborhood. I should say our Spectrum community. Slide this around. How'd it go? The Spectrum at Val Vista is a large master planned community, and it was started in 2003 with trust money, the Disney Trust. We have, at build out, we'll have over 1,900 homes. We have 11 neighborhoods, and the houses range from 110 to 400K. A little fact is, in 2012, we only had 13 foreclosures.
And Kathy, on that note of the build out, is it build out now, or is there, are there still some homes?
Mark Taylor is in planning process with the Town of Gilbert for our last parcel.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We have many amenities within our community. Recently, our community center was completed in October of 2012. We moved in. Actually, it was completed in September, we moved in in October. We have an event patio, capacity of 100. Our community center will also host private events. We've had three weddings, several birthday parties. I also invite the council to come and do an offsite meeting. I like to believe that we're more than the Northwest. We're kind of the heart of Gilbert, so come see us. Ball fields, tennis courts, basketball courts. Our amenities, and I would like to thank the town, we've also been in touch with Melanie Dykstra... I apologize if I pronounce her name wrong, the interim Parks and Rec director, in terms of coordinating town parks and rec programs and the amenities that we privately maintain within our community. Because as you see, the list is quite lengthy. We have begun a dialogue and a conversation about how to maximize and keep costs reasonable for both our community members who pay for these private amenities while still making them aware that they're there. And the town has... the Parks and Rec department has been wonderful. I'd also like to take this moment to thank Vicki Owens, Officer and Crime Prevention Officer, for coordinating, helping me make my community safer and programs that are available. And of course, Helga, who's... you know, her help is immeasurable in terms of community. The Spectrum community is more than just homes. We also have commercial entities, which are driving revenue for the town of Gilbert. We have our Spectrum Irrigation Water Delivery District, serves over 30 clients in water. Santan Motorplex, five dealerships, broke ground in another one, a big revenue generator for the town of Gilbert. Our Gilbert Medical Campus, as well as the medical plaza at Spectrum, which has over 16 buildings, and provides much-needed medical care in the community. When Helga asked if I would present, she mentioned that this was my opportunity to mention to the new mayor and the council members our challenges. And while most communities can tell you they have lots of different challenges, I really tried to be specific about the things that have to do with town and town resources. Street parking is a challenge in our community. Our streets are narrow. Our CCNRs are such that there is no overnight street parking. We do our best, but you know, I think there's an assumption among the general public that public streets and private streets, you know, unless the curbs are red, you can park there. So that is one of our challenges. Vandalism has been a recent challenge. Our community is now 10 years old, and while they were really young when they moved in, now they're in junior high, creating havoc. But we've had a rash of graffiti incidents and just general, not high crime, but vandalism, trespassing, from people that don't live within our community, taking advantage of amenities or parks or services. It's a challenge for our board of directors and something they're looking at. And also, streetlight maintenance. Because we have streetlights in our community that are maintained by the town of Gilbert and SRP when maintenance required, whenever a light bulb is out, it usually takes a half an hour of staff time to, you know, go out, look at the pole, see who's it is, you know, in terms of they're identified. And Gilbert poles are identified with a G and a number, but our residents don't know that the G stands for Gilbert. They don't generally call in the number. They usually say, "I live over on..." And they name their street and say the light pole's out. You know, they forget that we have 1,900 homes and, you know, hundreds of light poles. But so that's a challenge. And I don't present challenges without solution suggestions. These are suggestions. I'm not expecting an answer, any feedback at this time, but I'm hoping that maybe in the future, more dialogue. But we would request increased patrols to help with our vandalism issues. Notification of criminal activity arrests within our borders. Very recently, there was a drug bust along the canal that is within our property, and we had three residents call into our office to say what's going on. There were, you know, several police with the providers there. And it took us a couple of hours to find out what happened so we could communicate that to our community. So if there was any way that we could get notified before, you know, so we have something intelligent to say when they call us. And about those light poles, just a little sticker that says, "Call," and who would be the, you know, the number to call to report a light outage would be nice. And I want to thank you again for the opportunity to present my community. I welcome any... I welcome you to come and visit me. I know, Mayor, I want to thank you for coming out for our grand opening, and you've seen our beautiful community center and everything that we have to offer. I would like to invite the council members to come and make an appointment. Happy to have lunch. We have a beautiful kitchen. We can't cook in it, but except the microwave, but come on and come to what I described to my community as their family room and patio. And thank you again.
I echo that. The community center is just beautiful, and a lot of good grass area like here. And we accept that invitation, and thank you for the invitation last October. I wanted to make sure that the three requests, that we have those written down. So you've got it? Okay. We will do some follow-up. Thank you. Carl, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this time to be able to speak to you. I want to say, Mayor and Councilman Cook have been to our last two annual meetings, so you know Eldorado pretty well. Eddie, you're our go-to guy. I figured that out finally. Eldorado is one of the oldest communities around, not as old as yours. But about 20 years ago, there was a thing called RTC. Any bankers around here? Resolution Trust Corporation. Continental had this acreage, and they lost it to RTC. And so 20 years ago, it was a partnership between two people, or two entities, Lanford Homes is one side, and Pacific... I got it written down there. American Golf. Because we have an unusual problem on Eldorado. They've got a golf course. How many of you played it? Nobody. Oh, yeah. Eddie has. Oh, there you go. I've got plenty of balls, too, Jared. I'm on hole 18 at this point. You're right. Okay. We're real proud of our community. It's an unusual community, and it was formed because there's a north-south railroad called going to Chandler and a diagonal going through Gilbert. And guess what? All the drainage goes to the north and northwest. And the two railroads are dikes. So what we had to do, or the developer had to do, is the golf course was dug down, it became the retention area, and that dirt came up and got the building areas high enough so we were above the flood plain. That was a big job. In 1990, though, the county developed the two corners of McQueen and Baseline, on the southwest and the southeast corners. Not too good a job. That's the entrance to our community. We wanted to beautify that forever, because McQueen is beautiful if you get down to the railroad tracks. We had a little problem with the development on the southeast corner. There was a electronics firm there that was not hooked up to the sewer and didn't dispose of their waste properly. It went in subsurface. So we had what we called is the South Mesa Water Quality Assurance Revolving Registry Site in 1990. And by the way, that was 1990, and I was on the original committee. We're still meeting. We're about ready to close it, I hope. Because what's happened is, they've restored it. Thanks to SRPs well on the north side of Baseline, they took a lot of the material out and took it away. And then where the little place was that put it in the subsurface, they didn't recover there. And I'll leave this with your city manager. I hope it gets closed. There is no problem. The subsurface site has changed from a huge thing to a little one right underneath where it is. It does not affect any drinking water wells, either for Mesa or for Gilbert. We're a unique community on all sides. What do we have on all sides, Eddie? Industry. And the golf course makes a pretty good buffer force. So we're happy. About 592 homes, built within a three-year period. I've bought one of the last homes there, and I've lived there ever since. Eldorado is a great little community, and we like it very much. We like you there, Eddie. A little plug for our community. The mayor's been there. You drive through it, it's well-kept. You know what our monthly fee is for our homeowners? $30. We bill every three months $90. And we maintain a community center that we built ourselves with our own funds, three parks, basketball court, and tennis courts. But the lakes, we don't have anything to do with. That belongs to the golf course, thank God, and no swimming pools. You asked us about what our concerns are. Just this last year, both those two south corners of McQueen and Baseline developed in the county, and you didn't control it, which was really sad, because of the contamination on the one side. On the other side, we've got a concrete plant. In the old days, when there was a lot of work going on, 10, 11 o'clock at night, you know how they cleaned out the concrete trucks? With a sledgehammer. Bang, bang, bang. And poor code compliance wherever you are. Thank you. And then west of there was a late industry called Auto Recycler. Come in off of Baseline, no control. They stacked the cars up. It's not really a nice-looking place. And then further west from there was a materials place that caught on fire. And there were explosions like you couldn't believe. There's not real good fire protection up in there in that county area, old county area, I should say. I don't have a lot to say about our subdivision, but we've been through the same things everybody else in Gilbert has, you know, foreclosures and resales and things. But we have a solid little community. And in my time there, over 18 years I've been involved with the board, we had eight people that were problems that we had to take legal action against to recover. But it was good, you know, for 592. That's a pretty small percentage. The last thing I want to just say to the council, and this is coming from the heart, from the eastern canal to the west part of Gilbert is SRP lands, isn't it? That's where we are. And they have excellent water resources, which they have a contract and deliver to you. You pay the money, you treat it, your treatment plant, and it comes back to us. Then we have a couple other divisions of land. We've got Roosevelt, has some water. And then once you go past Roosevelt, we've got a major problem. Both those two big developments, Trilogy and Seville, have golf courses. And how do they water their golf course? From wells, groundwater. And the credits are pulled from you guys. So... And you have a treatment plant down there, SAP, that's supposed to take the deficit in all the areas. But I would just encourage the council to look real, real hard at your water resource picture to make sure you have your assured water supply, because about five-plus years ago, the previous council annexed your whole service area, water service area, to the groundwater replenishment district. And if you pump more groundwater than nature puts in, you're going to get a bill. And how are you going to pay it? Most recently, Queen Creek, a friend down there in Chandler Heights, got a bill from the replenishment district that goes on your tax bill, even though the original people weren't part of the deal. $2,000 to replace the groundwater that they used. So I don't want Gilbert to fall into that spot. I just wish you good luck. I know you've worked real hard with certain Indian tribe, and there's some problems with the U.S. Attorney, but keep after it till you get your 100-year supply. That's really important for the future of Gilbert. Thank you, Mayor. I'll answer any questions you guys have.
We appreciate the great water consulting advice. And you're one that has been keeping an eye on that for quite some time, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And to the council members, to our Eldorado Lakes, any... We do have, as you said, Councilmember Cook, he's a little biased, and he's admitted to it. But thank you. Carl, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cooper, we'll let you direct traffic.
All right, Mayor. First, we'll start with Joe Bacchus, and then Les Presnick, and then Jim Willerton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your service to our town. I'm up here representing the Silverhawk Homeowners Association. I'm president of the community at this time. I just wanted to stop by and express some concerns. First of all, I want to thank you for having Neighborhood Services. It's very useful to us to keep us informed of what's happening in the community. Helga keeps us plugged into what's happening in the town, which we wouldn't normally have because as board members and volunteers, we don't always get the information. But working with Helga helps us a lot in that respect. Recently, we had a string of burglaries in our area. We did put in the online request for more patrols, but I'm sure that limited resources being what they are. I went down to the Gilbert Police, I met with Lieutenant Art Johnson, and they were very responsive. They got somebody into the areas with patrols, and our problem seems to have gone away. It was making the neighborhood very uncomfortable because it was one right after another, and it was causing some serious problems.
Joe, just to help the council, can you describe the major streets?
Sure. Silverhawk Homeowners Association is 515 homes. It's between Guadalupe and Houston, between Cooper and Neely, to give you a perspective. It's right over there by Oak Tree School. I've heard this from a previous association, Public Works and Streetlights. It's really nice to have the streetlights maintained. It would really be helpful to me if all of the streetlights had a number on them, and if they perhaps maybe pulled some late-night shifts where we wouldn't have to report them. They drive a neighborhood and pick up on the lights that are down rather than us having to fill out an online form and then kind of chase it up, because I know, again, resources are tight. And maybe if they could use some of the administrative time to just drive the neighborhoods and pick up the lights that they can when they see a dark area, pick them up and bring them back into compliance. The code compliance people have been very helpful to us. We've had some issues in our neighborhood that they've swiftly responded to and gotten very, very fast resolution, talking to these mortgage companies or whoever's holding the property at the time that had abandoned. We've been very successful with them. The main reason I came here tonight was to ask for your support in not allowing the sober living home issue to be pushed back in priority again. I know it was delayed on this month's planning agenda, planning commission agenda. I really wish that that could be held, because that's an important issue to all of the associations and neighborhoods, because that issue is going to start to show up in different areas in different ways. And I think that it's important that the town get a hold of that and do whatever is within the area of the town's control to get that under the proper ordinances so that it doesn't become an issue going forward, because it is a problem in our neighborhood right now, and we'd like not to see it spread to any other neighborhoods before... not to see it spread to any other neighborhoods before the appropriate ordinances are put in place. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Joe, for coming. Are questions from the council?
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, our next speaker, he got a good report from his team, so I...
Les? That's just because I haven't been raising any ruckus lately. Mayor Lewis, council, my neighbors here in the islands. I just wanted to also thank you for your service. I think I have some idea of the time that you put in as a council member of the mayor. And just wanted to welcome you to my hood. You know, I started my community service as a HOA board member and president of the islands for three years, during the days when this was dirt, during the days when American Continental Amcor had gone bankrupt, and a lot of property in this community was laying vacant and was held by the RTC. And so as I look around, the legacy of the board that I had the honor of serving ultimately, you know, built this. With subsequent boards, they have done a tremendous job of maintaining our community. And as I've spoken to other HOAs and annual meetings, I've always made the observation that democracy at the grassroots level doesn't get any better or any closer to the people that you serve than HOA boards and communities. When you look at the Town of Gilbert, there are over 700 HOAs in the Town of Gilbert. And in spite of some of the best and worst efforts of our legislators to try and circumvent and gut the authority of those HOAs, what will make Gilbert look the way it is today 25 years from now and even 100 years from now is the strength of our HOAs. I truly believe that. That's why one of the things that I do is serve on the board and as president of the Leadership Center to help educate board members, because as I point out to them, you know, the only qualifications for getting elected are age, residency, member in good standing, and you've got more votes than the guy you beat, right? Okay? And then it's up to organizations like the Leadership Center to provide the education and the tools to give those board members and residents, because we invite everybody that lives in an HOA to come to our classes. The tools, the education, to be able to be better residents, be better board members. And so I want to thank the town for Neighborhood Services. You know, 25 years ago, there was no Neighborhood Services. I got to speak directly to the then-town manager, Ben Cooper, Vice Mayor Cooper might know who I was talking about, his father Kent. When I'd go down and ask for help, and he'd say, "We can't help you. You know, we have no money. We have no authority." And I'm going, "Wait a minute. You created us." All right. Well, we have no authority. But somehow, we got through that. Now there are departments called Neighborhood Services that support the HOAs, and that's very important. The last thing that I want to leave you with, and this is the very first conversation that I had with manager Kent Cooper, when are you going to come out and maintain our streets? It's been a while, guys. Our town manager, I'm putting you on notice. You know, we're behind schedule, and we need our streets maintained once again. Anyway, thank you again. Now, since I'm playing hooky from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, that's where I'm headed. So thank you for being here. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Les.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Just one more quick thing. And this is, this is just kind of a 50,000-foot, just a general question, that there's been conversation at the islands about this topic. And that is, here we are in the northwest part of Gilbert, and it seems as though 100% of the improvements, expansion, exciting projects, new stuff, all the wow factor is southeast of here, about 20 miles. Are there any plans to perhaps take a look at northwest Gilbert and maybe bring some of the pizzazz that's happening in the southeast part of the valley to the northwest part of the valley?
Town Manager Baner, we want some pizzazz, we want some wow. Now, there are 86 satellites that are going to be built here in the northwest quadrant. That's kind of a wow.
A satellite being, I'm sorry?
At Orbital Sciences, the next 86 Iridium NEXT satellites will be built right here.
Literally the satellites.
Literally. And other comments?
Sure, sure. I can, it was last fall, we were down at Power Ranch, and they had an opposite feeling that all the great things are on the north side of town, and where are they going to, where are they going to get their fair share of exciting things? Probably some of the most exciting things coming up in, occurring right now are happening in our heritage district with some new developments. The Heritage Marketplace development is finally taking off. There is a new sandbox restaurant that's in planning and zoning for review right now, as well as a two-story office slash retail building, and a second restaurant with a tenant yet to be announced. I think they're finalizing that deal. The town will pull the trigger on the construction of the parking garage in that location. And we are in negotiations with the university about bringing university campus into our heritage district. So a lot of exciting things going on in the heritage district, a lot of exciting things going on at Orbital Sciences, which is at the intersections of Elliott McQueen, the mayor had referenced Satellite Assembly. They recently secured the Iridium NEXT satellite contract. It'll be 83 satellites that replace the current Iridium constellation that is, was put in place in the late 80s, handles the lion's share of the world's communication networks for cellphone traffic and other various forms. That will make Gilbert, Arizona, the satellite manufacturing capital of the world right now, as they manufacture that. So a lot of exciting things happening, actually, in the northwest.
A little closer to earth, things like dog parks. Any thought of dog parks up in the northwest?
We are in the final stages of the parks' master planning process. I believe there is one last public open house on that, and if Melanie is still here...
Patrick?
June 26th.
June 26th. Councilmember Taylor is our council liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board, so that's exactly the kind of feedback we'd like to get from residents as we finalize that master plan.
We love our neighborhood up here, as I expressed before, and the islands overall. We're very happy. We have, we have some internal issues, but we don't have issues with the Town of Gilbert, except for that one that I asked to speak about, which is the, the development typically seems to be focused someplace other than this corner of Gilbert. So if you could just keep that in the back of your mind as, as new plans come up, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jim, not to, this is not defend. This is, that's great feedback, and we appreciate it. I do see our fire chief, Jim Joe Bush, and there's something about Fire Station 10 that you're proud of, and that's up in this area. And I, one reason why I mentioned that with what Jim brought up is, as Carl mentioned, that Fire Station 10 put up in our northwest quadrant, our response time right where we needed it, and for this area. And we're grateful for that. The parks you just mentioned, the transportation master plan, I know that covers all four quadrants. To Councilmember Daniels, Vice Mayor Cooper, anything that, we had a couple meetings last week for the citizens here, anything that they need to be following up on and be aware of for transportation?
I believe there's going to be an online portal. In fact, we have our own website for the transportation master plan, which is gilbertonthemove.com, right? Or .gov. It's something like that. But you can find the direct link from Gilbert AZ if you need it. But we will be seeking input for transportation needs moving forward, which is going to be the first, this is our first real attempt at a transportation master plan. And so it's very exciting for us as a community as a whole. And so that's one of, one of the many things that are going on right now. Also, as a side note, redevelopment is certainly a key factor in keeping Gilbert's vibrancy moving forward. And that's something that's not lost on this council, or, and definitely will be continued and carried forward as a theme. We recognize the fact that just because there's new development, and things have been new for many years in the Town of Gilbert, but we recognize that there's a need to just keep an eye on those things that might be aging and make sure that the infrastructure is getting the attention that it needs to keep Gilbert vibrant for years to come. And so that's not lost on this council. We will keep an eye on that. And hopefully, if I get my way, and I know other council members want it, too, that we'll, we'll develop a redevelopment plan that will, that will be comprehensive enough to address those issues.
Councilmember Cook, you had a couple of thoughts?
Well, some of the exciting things I remember is that, you know, near Costco, there's going to be a WinCo that gets put where the current Dodge dealership.
Right down the street.
So there's going to be competition between Costco, which is my favorite place to go grocery, but there'll be a WinCo there. I know a little bit further south, I just saw recently, the first Gilbert micro brewery is going next to Burger's Bagel, that I found out. That was, you know, something new here in Gilbert. You mentioned the fire station, which to me, it's the, you know, when we talk about a green leads, you know, building, that is our first wonderful facility for that. And...
Basketball?
Oh, yeah, the basketball. I know that my son plays basketball over in the courts off the Fiesta Boulevard. They've expanded their use of one of the, you know, commercial buildings to be even larger. And I know that they're having tremendous amount of tournaments that are there. And we learned that later on this summer, over at the baseball fields, there is going to be the, was it the state regional championship here in Gilbert, right next to McQueen Park?
We'll have to do a good job of spreading that with our Gilbert digital team, because that will be some great baseball. And it will be June, hot, but in the evening, we'll want Gilbert residents to come out and see some great baseball.
Appreciate it. Y'all are doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cooper, I believe that's the end of your list. I'm just going to confirm whether or not there were any other residents that wished to speak. Okay, thank you. Helga, thank you for helping to organize, and thank you again for coming to the council. We will continue our discussion on Thursday night, and our study session is adjourned.